Remove.
Second.
Hold your own.
Mrs. Durnbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Board of Education reports. Let's begin with the board first from Mrs. Sparks.
I have definitely reported legislative wise right now. The House is in summer recess, this is September, and the Senate is only meeting once a month. I did want to make sure everyone saw that the OSBA Capitol Congress conference was all been virtual this year. But that's all for that. Do you want to make your report?
Yes, please.
Okay, I only have two reports. We asked the students not to come in there. You know, the act deserves going in, so. And a lot of them have stuff going on. From Zoe, the only update that she has tonight is that she finished the group Google Drag Forum and will be sending out to teachers to see if she gets it past Mr. Wesley. And then June. I've spoken to Madison and Mr. Carroll regarding Madison's mental health posters. We do have the funding necessary to make this happen, so our next step is distribution. Over the Zoom call, we came up with a few locations such as back rooms, common areas, and certain classrooms that would get the most use out of these posters. We also still working on coming up with solutions on how to make them more effective in hallways since the poster is very informative and students don't tend to stop on their way from class eight o'clock. And that's all for the Zoom report.
Thank you. Did everyone hear okay? Did you hear? All right, great. Hey, Dr. Rohr, how many wants to make?
Now, before we start with the public, I just wanted to go over a few things in terms of COVID, face masks, transmission. Just a few items, just if these may come up tonight. I just want the public to understand some of the reasoning and data behind why we're doing what we're doing in terms of school this year. So I'd like to just, first of all, start talking about, a little bit about masks. You know, the question, and again, a lot of this information is on the CDC website. A lot of what we've gotten is from the CDC. And the question is, who should be wearing a lot of face masks? And the CDC recommends, and I think many of you, many of you know already, basically, it's two years of age and older, they're recommending wearing a face mask. Anyone two years, two years and above, again, it will help with preventing transmission, which I'm going to talk about in a minute, and does have some effect in terms of preventing the person wearing the mask from getting some of these things. So in terms of face masks, you know, the question is, you know, who should wear them? Again, it's two and above. The exemptions. What we're expecting, and I'm hoping not a whole lot, is the question of who would be exempt from wearing face masks in the classrooms? And there really are, there really are just three recommendations that are put out. One is children younger than two years of age, mostly because they can't, you know, pull it off or pull it down or do it if there's an issue. Anyone who has trouble breathing. And by that is truly if somebody is unconscious, having breathing difficulties, things like that. The third one is anyone who's unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to move the face mask off of themselves. Those are truly the only three exemptions for not wearing a face mask that the CDC is recommending. The things that don't get covered are things where my child has asthma, my child just has trouble breathing. I don't want him wearing it or her wearing it. Those are, those really shouldn't be and probably will not be acceptable reasons for having an exemption for wearing face masks. We are working, a lot of pediatrician found, some family docs are working with eight children's hospital, trying to send those, sort of send that information of what the expectations are and what are reasonable exemptions. So that the hope is that families just don't run to where the doctor says they want an exemption. There will be some exemptions, I think, that'll be given for those students who have special needs, that have trouble wearing it, have severe anxiety that's being treated through a doctor, where there truly would be issues and concerns with wearing the mask. So there will be definitely some exemptions based on those kind of, kind of issues. But we're hoping that, that most people understand and the reasoning behind why we're doing face masks. One of the questions came up about face shields. Are face shields acceptable? And let me just, let me just tell you the wording from the CDC. CDC does not recommend the use of face shields for normal everyday activities or as a substitute for face cloth coverings. So there will be times, I think, in our schools where we're going to have the teachers wearing face shields if they're up front giving class so they can see, the students can see them, they can hear them a little bit better. But for the students themselves, face shields are not a substitute for masks. The reason why face shields are used in a hospital setting where there's concern about coughing and things getting on when they're innovating a patient or caring for a patient where you can get the spread of disease mostly through the eyes. So face shields, whether it's chin up or chin down or face, it's really not acceptable in terms of students wearing face shields, just so everyone is aware. The other question is in terms of spacing. There are some districts, I think, that are modifying some of the spacing recommendations, but the spacing recommendations, again, from the CDC and everyone else is six feet. Not three feet, not two feet. So part of the reasoning behind our, sort of deciding what we're going to do in terms of school, and Dr. Henderson will be talking about plans for school for this coming year, I'm sure most of you have heard already. But in order to do spacing, you can't have 25 or 30 children in a classroom and have adequate spacing of six feet. It's just impossible. Those schools that are deciding to do it and go back to school will not be following the six feet guidelines if they have more than 20, 25 people in class. There are some smaller schools, private schools, you know, that have eight, 10, 12 kids in class. Again, it's doable in some of those situations. But to have adequate spacing, it's just very difficult. Same with bus situation. To have adequate spacing on a bus with six feet distancing, again, having a full bus and full loads of students really doesn't meet the guidelines and the desires of what was intended. So I think those are some of the reasons that we decided to do what we're doing in terms of going back to school. In terms of getting students prepared for wearing masks, we're hoping that a lot of the families are doing that now. Mrs. Swan will have, I'm going to give her later, and I think she may have seen it. Some things that the parents and families could do to get these children ready in terms of wearing masks. You know, it shouldn't be just never wearing a mask and all of a sudden the first day expect them to wear it. So there are some ideas and suggestions we'll put out on the website, to work, how the families work with the students in terms of preparing them. You know, the younger age students, you know, I think our plan right now is kindergarten through 12th grade, all masks. There are some that are doing it 10 and above or third grade and above or fourth grade and above. Again, the younger, the younger children, I can tell you from experience, usually have very little difficulty wearing masks. They're happy to do it, it tends to be a fun thing. Now, okay, how long that fun will last? Probably not, not long, but they can do it. There's no reason why they can't do it. So getting them, getting them ready for school is really important for the families and the attitude of the families in terms of going forward and how we're going to do that. Again, our, our main goal in terms of decisions we made as a board is, is looking at the safety of the students and safety of the staff and safety of all the employees in this school district, and that's really what we're going to focus on. Part of the reason, I think, we decided to go with two different options. You know, the academy pediatricians, myself, a lot of folks, believe that being in school helps, obviously, with social and emotional, mental stress issues. So having some interaction with peers in a school setting is extremely, extremely important. But again, we've got to do it in a way that's safe, that's spacing perfectly, and really protects everyone in the school. So I think, I think, and I'm hoping that we're all going to work together and try to do what's best for the district. We know, and I won't minimize this, we know this is going to be difficult for a lot of families in terms of finding childcare, working together, job situations. We're well of there, we're well aware of that, and we do not minimize that. But our goal is the safety of the students, the staff, and the people, and we need to at least come in with a positive attitude that this can work and will protect everyone in this building. So I will leave it up to Dr. Henderson to go on, but I just want you all to know some of the, that. The other, the other quick thing, we talked about transmission rates. Now, the younger kids don't transmit this disease. Well, the new studies show now that any student, any 10-year-old and above transmits this disease as well as an adult, 10 and above. We don't know the younger ones right now because they have not been studied. So I think as time goes on, we may find that they transmitted maybe not as great, but still transmitted disease. And again, we worry about transmission because there are people that are asymptomatic, and the young ones may do better, they may get, they may not pass away, they may not get in the hospital, but they still may transmit it. And they can transmit it to the teachers, to the staff, take it home, grandparents, anyone else. Safety first, safety first. So transmission, transmission rates and kids not getting sick, again, we know at least that right now they don't get as sick, but it's still not a reason, you know, to have everyone back at the same time and not be spacing and not wearing masks. Thanks.
Any other members want to comment now or want to wait? Okay? So we're getting ready for the hearing of the public. We want you to come to the podium, take your name and your address. If you're a minor, you don't have to say, take your address. Before you go up, before you go up, we want you to write on a piece of paper, if you have a pen, your name and your address, in case it doesn't get picked up. And just leave it in the chair over there, and we don't have to say people using the same pen over and over in the same paper, et cetera, to be as safe as possible. So you could do that, it'd be great. If not, if you don't have one, the microphone and the camera, hopefully we'll pick everything up. We're just trying to get the information and also be as safe as we can. So Board of Education provides, this is a convenient opportunity for the public to comment before we officially act and take. We ask everyone to come up to address the board at the podium, and the speakers are asked to give their name and address, except for minors, and only give their name. The board has 30 minutes of time before all the comments that be made. Please restrict your comments no more than three minutes. We have other items on the agenda. If you could see on the agenda, we have finished today. So please keep your comments to more than three minutes, and we'll have about 30 minutes of comments before we call it ended. Hey, anybody want to come on? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dan Keen. I live at 635 North Fifth Avenue. I did come to talk about COVID, but good luck to you guys. I think you blew it up fire. I'm going over here because I've read studies that indicate that teenage students in our high schools should start classes later in the morning, like around 9:00 AM. Additionally, the CDC has issued guidance for later start times. Now is the perfect time to be making that difficult transition. With virtual classrooms, you could easily make the transition having your whole room virtual meeting start at 9:00 AM and the end of your virtual day starting at 4:00 PM. Any extracurricular activities should be rescheduled within that school day. This, despite COVID and the lack of funds you're getting, this is the most important issue you are facing right now. It deserves your attention. It's been out there for years, five years at least. These studies have been out there showing us a start, that this is a better start time, and we need to get on the ball and get this done. I know that California has moved on this, but the state of Ohio is not, so it's incumbent on you to do the best things for our students. I sent a couple emails to the board, and I asked for a very specific question, but I did not receive very specific answers. None of these questions are difficult. They only address what actions you have taken since I brought this to Mr. Carroll's attention. He was the principal two years ago, 2019. And I also brought it to the board's attention on 22 April, 2019. I'm asking, what risk mitigations have you implemented to protect the school district from lawsuits due to early start times, based on increased student intolerance, fights, car wrecks, suicides, et cetera? By not following the CDC's and other experts' advice, I suspect you're putting the district in unnecessary risk of being sued. What action has the school board taken to adjust the start time of our high school to align with the current science? How many public meetings have you held specifically to share the current science with the community? Has the PTO reviewed the studies? What is their position on high school start times? How many conversations with PTO has the school board had on this important topic? Have the student, have the student councils and student board representatives reviewed the studies? And what is their position on high school start times? How many conversations with the student council, student board representatives, has the school board had on this important topic? Will the revised start time be ready for the beginning of school in 2021, this year, or 2022, next year? I don't think it should go beyond that. We should take action now. Do you need a copy of these studies? I've already sent those into the board. Hopefully you've had a chance to read them. For those of you who haven't, here's some important quotes that come from it. This is from an NIH publication. Our findings suggest that adolescent cognitive types are average, on average, too late for school start times before 8:30 AM. Sleep deprivation has a disproportionate impact on lower-income kids, and moving to later start dates, times, has decreased that harm. How bad is this for our teens? This is from a published article. According to the CDC, teens who do not get enough sleep are more likely to be overweight, not get enough exercise, suffer from depression, get head grazes, and engage in unhealthy risk behaviors, like drinking, smoking, and drokeys. There is also a correlation between lack of sleep and mood problems, including suicidal. It is one area of research where the results are conclusive. There is an enormous body of research showing that later start times have positive outcomes. There are no studies showing that later start times or showing that students do better with earlier start times. So I've sent an email, June 29th, to Tom Henderson, and he replied, but I have not heard detailed responses. And then I sent an email to, I sent an email, I received a junk email from John Carroll back on January 3rd, 2019. And again, the board has not been able to even answer what actions they've taken to address it or even bring this up to the community. So again, thank you for your time. And I hope you go on this thing.
Any others?
Here's the superintendent and Centerville Board of Education. The Billie Develt would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Rohr, Mrs. Megan Sparks, and Dr. Henderson for their attention at the Billie Develt's meeting on July 1st, 2020. As a group of parents of African-American, Black, and multiracial students, our prime concern is the success of our children of color in the Centerville school system. With your assistance, cooperation, and professionalism, together we can inspire a hope for a new generation of leaders as we provide a foundation for a successful future. We were encouraged that the superintendent and the board clearly stated in our meeting that you intend to adopt the goals and plans of the staff, diversity, equity, and inclusion team as priorities of the Centerville Board of Education. We look forward to partnering with DEI and the board to work towards establishing a school system that is more inclusive in the overall curriculum of education, extracurricular programs, as well as training and dialogue with staff and students that create a greater atmosphere of racial bias and an atmosphere of anti-racism. To that end, the Billie Develt's urges the board to adopt the staff DEI plan as a board mandate to enact policies that evidence commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. As we plan for the opening of the school and the training of staff, teachers, and administrators, a commitment to DEI necessitates a cognizance of the hostile racial climate that currently exists in our country and in our community. Does the district plan to have prior to the opening of schools substantive and meaningful professional development that will assist staff and teachers in navigating issues such as the effects of racialized trauma and social emotional matters? In addition to the immediate training, we expect that more intensive training with experts in DEI field will happen on a continuing basis to create spaces for all students to feel safe and valid. Please refer to our email to which we list on DEI professionals. We look forward to working with you, building relationships, and serving as a resource for the advancement of education in Centerville City schools.
My name is Robert Taylor. I live at 25 Thursday with love, America. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a lady coming up there. Come here. All right. Well, I was trying to help you and get the nervous over, didn't I?
That made it all.
All right.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight and those in attendance regarding the resolution to adopt a diversity plan for Centerville City schools. My name is Ryan Pottuck. I reside in 183 Cherry Drive here in Centerville, and I have children in the public school districts. I am a veteran who has served this country honorably. I've worked in multiple US government intelligence agencies, started my own business, and have traveled around the world multiple times and lived among different cultures. I am currently an engineer and managing complex developing projects for the Air Force, and people like me are Core Democrat for these districts. In my professional and personal life, I have had black supervisors, subordinates, roommates, friends, some of which I was very close with, enough so to consider them family. But for today, I have never talked about any of them in the context of their schedule. This, I believe, is what will happen across our districts to the staff, student body, if you implement a diversity policy that elevates one race over another. Contrary to the misleading name, misleading name, it appears the people behind the diversity, equality, and inclusion efforts do not seek to expand the mind of all people regardless of their racial background. There is no content on their Twitter that talks about cultural diversity of white people. You can investigate their Twitter page for yourself. It is at twitter.com/CentervilleDEI. A quick review of the timeline over the past two months will show the following. Seven posts promoting LGBTQ and alternative identities. Twenty-nine posts of messaging promoting white people of all ages, each one about racial justice and anti-racism. Nine posts celebrating the scene with white guilt. Two posts promoting a communist view of equality and equality. And four posts promoting liberalized women. This is a free country, and I continue to do my part to ensure the freedom of all peoples to live their lives as they see fit. That freedom does not give any person or group the right to systematically implant their social views and morals upon white children. Groups like this see racism everywhere they live, only they lack the ability to see it in their own ideas and actions. Let me put it this way. Would you ever consider taking a diversity plan to a predominantly Black school district and teaching their staff and students to understand and accept white identity? Why not? I hope the answer is put in your minds. Let me also clarify about this. Slavery is bad. Racism is real and is bad. And educating our children about the historical facts surrounding it is inappropriate undertaking for a public school system. It is not appropriate, in my opinion, for the public schools to instill their morals in our children. That is what this diversity plan looks to be, based on the own message of the group behind it. They will preach tolerance, but where is the tolerance for white culture and others? If you're interested in the well-being and education of our children, teach them philosophy and give them the tools to think for themselves. Teach them how to parse through the vast amounts of information they are presented with daily and make their own reasoned conclusions. Teach them to discuss ideas and be open to other points of view without throwing away what makes them individually unique. Nothing I have seen leads me to believe this diversity plan will do anything except force us to see each other by the color of our skin or celebrate superficial penalties. That itself is very deeply humanizing. I implore this board to reject any diversity plan proposed by Centerville DEI or any other group that operates under the name of diversity until a strictly defined program of limited scope is deployed public with wide dissemination and engagement by members of the school districts. In this day and age, I cannot extend to you the benefit of adopting, especially when the well-being of our children are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you for your address, please.
Ryan Pottuck, 183 Cherry Drive. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Truman Capri. I'm a, I'm an incoming freshman here at Centerville High School. I'm scheduled to be in honors classes. I play football, basketball, and I'm on track. I'm also on the debate team. So I'm here to provide my point of view as a student on COVID and what online schooling looks like and maybe even positive. So not only is school-based education, but it's also a way for students to interact socially, to build relationships that will last them for the rest of their lives. And I've, I've seen teammates and friends in school that without school and sports, they could be out doing way worse things and making mistakes that they can't fix and that will affect them. As a person who is in high school classes and challenging classes, and someone who went through online school in our last quarter, it's very, very, it's way more difficult to be stimulated with those classes than it is being in school. Because you have many distractions at home, but you don't have here at school. And personally, I felt that the quality of education that I was seeing online was way, was not as good as here at school. And I, I think, that's obvious to many people, but I think what a lot of people will think is, if that continues in the future, many students will not, their, their intelligence and their academic performance will go down in the future. It won't be as comparable. Centerville is a very, we're very well academically and physically, or in sports. And I don't think that can continue if we prolong our online schooling. Obviously, everyone is making sacrifices in this time, but I think that we need to be putting students going back to school full-time as a priority because not only for the students, but also for the parents who are making sacrifices and who can't go to work because they have to save their children. Obviously, health is a big concern here. But there's other health concerns that come with that one. Not only are you being maybe exposed to worse situations or you're, you can get in trouble with a student, you are being isolated socially, that can lead to anxiety. I personally have experienced changing of friends, like I've lost and gained new friends over this, over our course. Just so, online schooling, in my opinion, and I'd like to think that my opinion is similar to many, many students all across Centerville, it's just not the same. You can't keep going and be expected to perform, especially with state testing and all year round. It's, 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 you can't expect that. That's not something that students can have. So thank you for your time, and I hope you.
You too.
Sorry, guys, I didn't remember those names. I'm Angela Kieland, and I'm here to talk about the COVID issue and all this stuff. My son has an IEP, and during that whole process, it's no ever process, there's a lot of stuff. You guys know that? You guys know that? But in one of the processes, a discussion in regards to placement. And with the 50-50 placement and even possibly going to 100% online, that placement is kind of being ignored. So in that process of the ARF and IEP, there's discussion about least restrictive, what is the most unofficial, all that kind of thing So in that process of the bar and IEP, there's discussion about least restrictive, what is the most unofficial, all that kind of thing that goes into deciding where a child with special needs is going to be served. So in my case, my son's case, he is third in a class, a resource classroom with a total of six students. Not a lot of students, six students, and it sounds to me like it already means kind of the goal of what the board is trying to get in a side of a classroom. But at this point, he is not, he is being required to, it's still a discussion, but at this point, my understanding is that it will be still fifty-fifty and probably the general public. But that has already been in terms of the general public, the student population. But that's already been determined by my sons are meeting an IEP that that is not appropriate need to meet the needs such as of regular ed classes. So in his IEP, he has a resource classroom, and not only does he have a resource classroom, he also has an aide working with him one-on-one. So I don't know, and this is why I feel emotional about this, how I as a non educator can step into that role and engage a child with special needs on the level that is being required with having to do online school. My son will not engage in online school. I had to sit with him the whole quarter every day, and I can't continue to do that. So, and I don't even know if I'm doing it right, you know, like there's, there's reasons why people have an asterisk in such land and that we value them and employ them here is because, you know, people like me don't know how to do it. So I'm really hoping that you guys will look into this special ed component, especially in the resource rooms, and address that area of need because right now, I know my son and our family are pondering what that will look like for my son. So that's my, that's my, I care being emotional about it, so I'm fine.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, so I'm trying to read some of you guys on the phone. Some of your contacts don't work online. I call it, it doesn't go anywhere. And I said, what's the best place to find you? Here. So I didn't write anything out, like these elephant speeches, which are great. I just literally sat there and wrote this out, so. I'm gonna start at the end and finish the beginning of my statement once I got the writing it all out.
What is your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Tim Schwartz. I'm a Centerville resident. So I feel like my daughter's concerns should be the last items that you guys hear, because then they might actually be remembered. Alright, so the first basic one, I don't sign petitions, but I signed a petition that's unchanged.org requesting you reconsider the blended schedule. That's basically why I'm here today, is to talk about what in the world we're gonna do when the child's only in school for two days a week. Please at least publish how the results of all these surveys that you guys have been sending us from, you know, the beginning of April, May. How many students are actually gonna be doing a hundred percent virtual? How many kids are gonna be left in the school? How many kids are gonna be in each class and so forth? Please ensure all hand sanitizer's been checked and that it's not on the FDA recall list. I think there are like twenty-four different brands now, and I'm sure, you know, everybody stockpiles a bunch of sanitizer and all of a sudden you have to call half of it because some recalls. Also regarding the legacy that was passed, was passed in November, please release plans on how the extra income will be allocated. What portion is being allocated for COVID response and cleaning, remodeling, bussing, anything that we're having to do? And will I be receiving a refund if my children, my child is in a blended class for two days a week as opposed to five? That is the end of what I wanted to say, so here's the beginning. Since we all have choices in life, yours is to be part of the school board, making ultimate decisions that impact thousands of families. This is my time to share what it's like, and I don't know, I'm not on social media, so I don't even care if you're watching this. Or if anybody is here. So this is my time to share with you what it's like to be impacted by these decisions, okay? My choice is to be a woman in engineering whose career dictates that I'm at work forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. My choice is to be a working mom, balancing a raising, a well-rounded, soon-to-be sixth grader with my work hours. My choice is to be a supportive wife of a husband who also works forty hours a week. I will teach my daughter during the days and look at nights, if that's what this comes down to, okay? Childcare facilities either cut off at the age of eleven or a fifth grader. I stood in line five forty in the morning at the Springer OIMCA to get one of seven available spots they had, just for summer. The Centerville Park District, they were booked within seven minutes of their online registration. Washington Township Rec Center, they closed registration and only allowed those families to register in the February for the summer classes, and then they filled up. So I ask you, what do you suggest I do? Let's see, do you suggest I take over a hundred hours of vacation just to cover one day a week? Ask my husband if he can take a leave of absence? Ask my parents who are in the high-risk category because of their age? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what to do because August twenty-fourth is right around the corner. I'm also very concerned about our numerous military families that might not have a network of family members here in the area like I do. Even if my parents aren't able to watch my child, they might not have that support. We all know since March, we've said these are unprecedented times. March was a long time ago, and we need to begin to think that changes are implemented now have a lasting effect on our children. Fifth graders were told there would be a virtual tour of the school. Nothing. They were asked about interest in using foreign instruments of course. No follow-up. Language? Nothing. When is orientation? Will they switch classes? Stay in one room? Will there be a study hall in the morning? Do they need to sign in each class every day to their online? Does once a day? Those are my daughter's concerns. She's the one in the sixth grade, and those are her concerns that she wanted to give her to you. She said, can you call them? Can you email them? I said, you know what? Well, maybe I don't ask them. Where's the virtual tour? Is she gonna be in one class? Is she gonna run class to class? Should I have one teacher, multiple teachers, study halls? What do these kids' days look like? We haven't communicated to them. There's very few fifth graders going into sixth grade that remember their teacher sitting on Google Classroom saying, we're gonna get a virtual tour. And guess what? She's waiting. She's still waiting. So whatever decisions you guys make, whatever conditions are out there, I know you guys have a decision to make, and you have to make it for the whole entire city, district, but please, just start providing some answers. Because I know you guys work hard on what we do, and you have all these answers down there somewhere. Just start posting. Just so we can be informed and make our informed decisions on how we are gonna live our lives starting August twenty-fourth. I know we're limited to a half an hour, and I know you guys like to keep that time. I want you back three more.
Please.
Please update your phone numbers on the website because plenty of guys is disconnected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pamela Brookling. I live at sixty-two Brookburn Court, Centerville, Ohio, four five four five nine. I am here to ask for you to reconsider the five-person day. There is a large number of parents in this community that feel a five-person day is essential. I have sent a letter to you with the coordinates and email. I have not received any response, so I'd like to publicly ask the questions that we're seeking to have answered. Primarily, how was this decision made? What metrics were used to weigh the risk of COVID exposure with the risk of children not being in school? We've received boilerplate PR statements. We've heard a lot of no and no in rhetoric, but these questions have not been directly answered with data and thoughtful responses. What studies or supporting data does the district have that suggests hybrid learning will provide an adequate education for children in this district? If the two-day schedule is maintained, what data metrics will be used to determine what it is safe to return to a full schedule of in-person instruction? What specific thresholds need to be met? Who is deciding? Who is making those decisions based on what specific data? If this is a potentially evolving and situational determination, why has the decision already been made more than a month ahead of time that we will only attend two days? How do you explain Centerville's decision to vary from the five-day in-person learning options being offered by other Montgomery County school districts, including Kettering, Miami'sburg, West Kelton, and Mandalia Butler? How have you considered the economic impact to working families and the potential this plan has to force unemployment and economic devastation to households of this community? Have you evaluated the potential economic impact to the community, including loss wages, affordability of housing, and ability to pay taxes? What measures will you offer to mitigate mental health impacts to at-risk students, including depression, adjustment disorders, hunger, abuse, and neglect? What is the impact of the schedule on offerings for special needs students, the gifted curriculum, specials including art and music, after-school activities, and sports? And finally, how can we work together with you to make a five-person in-person day schedule possible? What can we do? How can the parents show support for this? Can you survey the parents who have chosen in-person learning to find out how many support, five days? We understand what your other depths and the complicated regulations that you're trying to comply with of the governor's office and sources and recommendations that change daily. We understand. I know that this is a difficult position here, and I respect and appreciate your service to the community. So tell us, what can we do? How can we help you or work with you to make this a possibility? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Bolson, and I'm at ten fifty-six Cedar Creek Circle, and I am also here advocating for those of us who would like a five-day schedule. In Montgomery County, there are sixteen school districts. Twelve schools have the option to go five days a week. Two, two schools do not have a plan yet, and one school district is all online for the first nine weeks. We are the only school district in our county to have a blended schedule. I will also ask for the transparency for these surveys that not only parents have taken, but also the teachers have taken as well. I would like to know what teachers think about this, about both the schedules and, and the hybrid models. You know, Governor DeWine has given each school district the authority to do what's best for their district. And in our city, Centerville and Washington Township has just over eighty thousand people. And as of five days ago, there were only two hundred and fifty-six cases and only, and only five deaths here in our county. So I'm wondering why this is being put back in Governor DeWine's lap for a choice? It seems like we are still basing it on all of his data where he's given you the choice to do what's best for our district. And we've done these surveys, and can we put it back in his lap? So I will also ask, I'm wondering how, how this hybrid option is, is the best for our children. Why aren't parents getting the choice for five days when all of these other school districts seem to have been given the choice? Why isn't it a choice for those single parents? Why isn't a choice for households and families where both parents need to work, or that single parent who needs to work? And I'm not sure if anyone realizes, I'm, I'm paying as much for childcare, I will pay as much for childcare during the school year as I will for them to go to school in this hybrid model. And I would really like to know where the research is for children to be in a mask for eight hours a day? Have professionals doing it? I understand there are professionals out there. Where is the research for children and their development and their brains and how children can learn to read and write in masks? Where is that research? I've been thinking about it. I think as, as a parent, I am just looking for the option. I'm not saying it's right for every family, but I'm asking for the options so that we can make the choices that's best for our families. Thank you.
Our word will retain. Let's go ahead and get these last two, then we'll pop them there. A few last, briefly.
Good evening. My name is Dean Heine. I'm at H2H2 Ryan Way in Centerville. Good evening, Mark. Thank you for the time to visit with you. I, I wanna just frankly read a letter that my wife sent to all of you. This might be repeat for some of you and probably the first time for others. So I apologize for those that's reading. So my wife and I have lived in Centerville since nineteen ninety-one. We have voted literally for every single school board issue that's ever been presented. We've put yard signs in our yard, what has maybe not been quite so cool, and put yard signs in the yard, voting for taxes to increase. But we've done it because we believe in this group to make the right decisions. That has stopped. First, I can't begin to appreciate the pressure on all of you during this very difficult time. I know all of you certainly have the very best intentions and want the best for our students, teachers, parents, and the entire Centerville community. However, I must tell you that we were very disappointed when we watched this recent board meeting online. We were actually in Florida, in another hot zone, enjoying Disney with our mask on, if that's possible. The Centerville students belong in school, period. Not only is this the most logical and common sense conclusion, the science says students must be in school as well. I don't think any of you can fully appreciate the hardships that this decision has placed on many in the Centerville families in, in this community. Some anecdotal evidence of this is the fact that dozens of families are desperately trying to get to incarnation in other people's schools because they want to go full-time. Although every school-aged child should be in school, I'm especially concerned for the high school students. By the way, that young man that's here, man, there he is right there, man. If I could do what he did as a freshman, I'd be rocking it today. Great job. These high school days will be gone forever. The memories they make in high school will stay with them forever. In some more challenging cases, there will be much greater risk of these students drifting from a structured education and a life impacting forever. I'm sure by now that you know nearly every other surrounding district. I'm sure by now that you know nearly every other surrounding district is going back full-time. Beaver Creek, Belthrough, Kettering, Miamisburg, Springfield, Northmont. Why Centerville has decided to take this route is bewildering. Obviously, there's a risk of going, there's a risk of going back to school. Providing an online option is a great way to satisfy the families who are worried about their child and might have perhaps getting exposed, like COVID might be triggering a rare disease of some kind. There's a risk in everything we do, a risk in everything we don't do. Just recently, in Indiana, two unsupervised six-year-olds were somehow conned into sending naked pictures to a forty-two-year-old. Now imagine, that opportunity is going to exist and it multipliers if these kids are home by themselves. And that's what some parents are going to have to do. They won't like to do that, but they will have no choice.
Okay, I'm, I'm, golly. Okay. The answers shouldn't be to shut them out of all of this education. Finally, the idea that parents and students should have enough information to choose between an online or a personal schooling option is unfair. I don't know about the rest of you. We were asked to vote on this, and we had no information to make this decision. We voted to send them to school because that seemed like the best thing at the time, but I don't know anymore. Just as a reference point, thirty-seven children, zero to fifteen, have died of COVID as of July eighteenth. Four hundred and seventy-seven died the last preseason in this age group. Thank you.
How are you? My name is Cora Henry Jones. I'm a parent of a rising ninth grader. She's very enthusiastic about coming here to Centerville High School. She's been looking forward to it since her brother, who is ten years older than her, graduated from Centerville High School. My daughter has been extremely successful educationally here, as she attended a portion of her elementary school, all of her middle schooling through Centerville High School. So I come to you as a mother. I come to you as a woman with twenty-seven years of educational experience as a high school teacher, followed by being a professor. I come to you as a black person in a black family who lives in Centerville. I mentioned that last part because we've had wonderful experiences, but Centerville is not in a bubble. It is part of the entire world. I've read through the diversity, equity, and inclusion plan that you will discuss this evening, and I am impressed by the plan. I'm impressed that it is a first step toward helping teachers, families, students face challenging and difficult issues, some of which are around race. But diversity, equity, and inclusion is not just about race. It's important that you adopt this plan in part because, from what I've read, it includes and encourages and seeks community and parent inclusion and input and development as it goes along. In my experience here in Centerville, that has been an important part of my daughter's education and my son's extracurriculars and education. It's also important because the plan, as I've read, and I do have some background, as I mentioned, in education, but also in thinking about diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, it is based on solid research and expertise. It is a good first step in the direction of facing challenges that we already face. It's important to continue to try to be proactive. And lastly, I want you to accept the plan because it is a courageous, brave thing to do, to face what you know is difficult, what you know you might be afraid to face. And when I say you, I don't mean you individually. I mean us as a community. So I hope this evening, as you discuss the plan, that you will see its merits and you will adopt it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to give feedback. I truly believe, my name is Curtis Overe, from the Sixty-Five South Avenue. I truly believe feedback is a gift because nobody fixes anything that they don't think is proper. So, I won't delay or some of the points, very good points that people have made. First of all, according to the CDC, COVID more deadly to school-aged, or flu is more deadly to school-aged kids than COVID-19. The online education that kids receive this spring was not in any way equivalent to what they are supposed to get and what I expect them to get. They did better with Khan Academy teaching themselves than they did following did at the online program. The school must do what it can to protect them from death. The school cannot and should not try to protect them from getting sick. That happens. It has always happened and it will continue to happen. Please, don't take that responsibility, otherwise you're going to have to pick up a lot of other things. Stick to the things you can accomplish. As far as accomplishments go, what's the goal? Are we going to count sick? Are we going to track sick? Am I going to get some sort of report that tells me we're on track to hitting our goal of sickness? And if we are, how long is that going to take? And when are we going to make adjustments? When are we going to look at that data and make a decision whether we're being affected? And what are we going to change it to? If we're just going to the CDC or we're going to the federal government for recommendations, you can't make any changes. It doesn't matter what the data says. So we're doing a knee-jerk reaction. I appreciate this school system. You've got one all the way through, one about to be through, and one more in the middle. You guys have done great. Great. Don't trip it up on this. I'm not going to pull the ladder up behind me. The next generation of kids that aren't mine still need a good education. Finally, we're going to use online education. Why should I buy it here? Why couldn't I get it from anywhere in the world? I'll take my money, and I'll spend it how I want. Isn't that how it should be, school choice? Thank you.
I'm at one-one-four-two, Lynn Oak Drive in Centerville. So, answers to most all of life's questions, the decisions are often right in the middle. For one, my husband and I are extraordinarily proud of the decision that this district has made to follow a hybrid model in this next school year. The only thing that matters is the safety of our communities that are staffed. As unfortunate as this is, we're all involved, and this is terrible and unfortunate, not unfair anyways. We, as a community, need to come together to make it better. So what can we do? I've heard a few of you ask this question. How can I help? Here's what we can do. Wear your mask. Stay out of crowds. Don't eat inside at restaurants. Don't travel to hotspots and come back into the community without quarantine. These are all basic things that if we all followed to the degree of what, eighty percent? We could eliminate the rate of infection in our community to a level that we can return five days, and that would be awesome for everybody. But until then, we have to follow our one and only obligation to keep our students and staff safe. And to do that, we just need to follow the science and the flow and the study, and that will take us, that's the only way it's going to go soon. So again, I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your decision. Good luck for your employer. Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda. First of all, I think Dr. Henderson is going to thank all of us, all the board members, all the staff, and I really appreciate all of your comments. While we don't respond directly to a lot of the emails, we give those responsibilities to Dr. Henderson and a member of his staff. We have responded to some. It's not that we don't care about what you're saying. It's not because we're ignoring you. We have a process. The process is to let Dr. Henderson and his staff deal with the issues most of the time because they know a lot more about this than any of us, including the five of us. We trusted him, we think he and his staff are doing a great job. So we've tried to get the responses. I know Dr. Henderson is calling some people, we're adding emails. So we're trying to get back to you as much as we can, but when you're getting ten, twenty, thirty emails a day, it makes it more difficult for us to do, especially with Dr. Henderson and his staff and all the other things that they also have to do. We do appreciate your comments, keep us coming. We thank you very much for coming tonight and making your presentations. So, superintendent report. Operator.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Good evening, everybody. I thought what I would do is, I don't want to be redundant, but I did want to present some of the presentation that I presented at the work session, and I know some of you had questions. And before I start, we have continued to try to push out as much information as possible every week. And so, we have added to our frequently asked questions on our website, and we have continued to push out plans regarding what we're hoping to do this coming August. So, I would encourage you to, again, if you haven't looked at that recently, that has been updated tremendously over the last couple of weeks. There's lots of information there, a lot of information, actually some of the questions that were asked tonight. So, I would encourage you to check there. And like Mr. Dahl said, we are getting a lot of emails, we are getting a lot of questions, we are working hard to get back to everybody just as quickly as we can, and I think we're getting close to being somewhat caught up with that right now. But I did want to share a little bit about and add some additional comments now that we're two weeks away from when I first did this presentation. So again, we did look at a lot of information from the community, from the experts. This is something that I shared two weeks ago. We did receive over five thousand surveys from three groups, students, parents, and teachers, and we continued to work hard throughout the summer. We had what we call weekly check-in meetings with staff, with our principals, every single week, actually that started in May and continued all the way through and have continued all the way through the summer. I've been involved in superintendent's meetings through Montgomery County Educational Service Center every week as well. We have met several times with Jeff Cooper, who is the public health commissioner, and we've continued to interface with the higher department of education, governor's office, and we, as a county, have tried to look at everything that's out there, to look at all the research and all the facts and figures as we develop this plan. Again, our goal is to make sure that students and staff are as safe as they can be. We understand, and there's no one else in this community that would love to see all the students back one hundred percent of the time every day than myself, and that is true. We hope that we can get there. I also worry that if we don't do some things and don't start off slow, that we'll be closed down before we even get started. And so, our goal is to be back in session one hundred percent every day as soon as we can. We hope that that will come to fruition. I don't wish any ill luck or bad luck with anybody else in our neighboring communities or anything like that. I hope they do well too, and I sincerely believe that, that they have the best interest of their staff and students as well. But we want to make sure that we're in this for the long run. We want to make sure our staff and students are safe, and that we want to get back one hundred percent as soon as possible. So, you know, again, those are the things that I just mentioned, only stayed a little bit differently. So we did come up with two options. The option one, which is a fluid option, which is what most of the comments were about tonight, really has three components. It has the in-person model, which would be the one hundred percent every single day. That's our goal. That's where we're trying to get to. Then there's the fifty-fifty blended model, and then the fuller remote model. Obviously, in the spring, we didn't have any choice. That was surprise to us. We weren't really ready for that. In my wildest dreams, after all these years in education, I would have never thought that we would have been closed down for the months that we were. Every district dealt with that. We had to mobilize very quickly. I appreciated the "if we can do it" type attitude that was exhibited by our staff. I agree, it wasn't perfect. It wasn't as good as maybe we would have liked it to have been, but we did work hard in unprecedented times to do the best that we could. We also understand that if we have to go to that same model again for this next school year, that we have to do better than we did last spring. And we worked hard all summer to make sure that we could do that. So option one has those three components, and basically, what we would like to do, like I said, if the students are every single day, we'd like to get that to just as soon as we can. One of the decisions we made early on was that we saw that there was not equal access in our community. There's not equal access to devices, to Wi-Fi, and that was important to us. We felt like we, as a district, owed it to all of our students to make sure that they had everything that they needed to be successful in school. It was something that we took, that challenge that we took on, and early on, we found out that several things. One is that even for families that had devices at home, even when we were shut down beginning on March the sixteenth, that parents were working from home as well, and they needed to use their laptops, and so students many times had to share those. So we worked hard and looked at different things, and we continued to be close, had lots and lots of conversation, and decided one of the priorities that we needed to really work hard at as a district is to make sure that no student would go without what they needed to be successful in school. So we made the decision that we were going to add Chromebooks and buy additional Chromebooks. And so this coming August, we're happy and proud to announce that we'll be providing a Chromebook to every single student in the district that's preschool all the way up through our seniors. It'll be a device that they can keep, it'll be a device that they can use for the entire school year. We won't have to worry about somebody coming up like Dan was trying to do to sanitize the microphone and the podium, because those will be their own devices, and we won't have to do that for them as they come up, and those will be what they get to use. We're prepared to make sure that everybody has connectivity, that Wi-Fi is available to every student and every family that needs that. Last spring, we purchased a hundred and twenty of those hotspots and provided that internet service to those families that needed it in the district. So again, we want to make sure that as we start school back in August, that we're successful, that we stay in session, that we ultimately get to our goal of being one hundred percent in school every single day, but we're going to make sure that our kids have what they need, so. So basically, like I said, you know, we will serve lunch every day, so some people had questions about what will a school day look like even on a fifty-fifty model. The only difference in the fifty-fifty blended model is what some folks mentioned tonight, that only half of the students are coming to school on any given day. We will still have lunch. They can pack lunch. We will be serving lunch through our student nutrition services. They've developed a plan where there'll be hot meals, hot lunches will be provided. They'll have the opportunity, students will have not as many choices as they've had in the past, but all the protocols will be followed regarding safety. We will have phys ed, we will have art, we will have music appreciation. We're still working on the conditions for a band, an orchestra. Orchestra is not necessarily an issue because they use the string instruments. The instruments where they're blowing into, especially woodwinds, has proven to be a little bit of an issue, but we're working to get information around that and surrounding that. At one time, two weeks ago, we thought that maybe we were going to have our integrated arts, our phys ed, art, music, travel into the classrooms and take students out of the classroom. We now have a plan in place where students will actually leave the classroom and will travel to those particular areas. So we even changed that over the last couple of weeks based on some ideas and goals of managing those transitions safely. Unfortunately, we are going to have to avoid those mass gatherings, field trips and everything until things settle down, but I think everybody understands that. We, there have been conversations tonight about face coverings, and you know, we are going to ask students and staff to wear face coverings. We are going to practice social distancing. We believe that we, just like we are here and like all of you out there, are six feet apart. feet apart, we believe that that's going to help. And again, our goal, like I said several times already, is to stay in sessions and to get back to 100% as soon as possible. Uh, we'll have, um, a special room set aside close to our clinics, and we'll have protocols in place to handle those situations should a student or staff number gets sick. And we will deal with that based on the CDC guidelines and guidelines and protocols for public health. Um, cleaning, uh, we've spent a lot of time, uh, and a significant amount of finances over the summer, and I need to thank my central office staff. My team has been working hard, harder than, um, a lot of people right now to make sure that we're ready to go for the, the August. And so we have built up an inventory of face masks, gloves, sanitizers, machines that can go into classrooms in large areas that can cleanse an area quickly and efficiently, safely. Uh, we, we make sure that we checked all of our sanitizers and the, the chemicals that we've purchased to make sure that they're, they're fine and there, there's no danger to our staff or students. Um, and, um, you know, again, we'll be working hard to make sure that, that physical distancing is in place. Um, again, uh, well, we have a plan and we've altered and rearranged our custodial, uh, schedule to overlap, which is just a simple way of saying that we've crafted a plan that makes sure that the coverage of our custodial staff is such that we can go in and clean, um, every, all day long, but, but definitely at night, we'll do the deep cleaning, um, and doing all of those kinds of things. Uh, spray mists, like I said just a second ago. Uh, we've also made the decision to install touchless water bottle filling stations. Um, we started that initiative several years ago. It was actually a class gift here at Central High School to put these water filling stations in that are touchless. And so we've invested in, in quite a few more. So every elementary will have four, I think, water, uh, filling stations in the building. Middle schools will have six, five, I'm sorry, looking at my expert in the back there. And of course, the high school's going to have many more than that. The other, uh, drinking fountains that are called bubblers or whatever will be disconnected or, or disabled, so those, those will not be used, and, and students will be encouraged to bring water bottles with them. Uh, even on the bus, we're going to do everything we can to practice the social distancing. Siblings will sit together as, as possible. Again, face masks will be worn, uh, through that as well. So option two is the, the total online experience. Again, we have been working, uh, with all the other Montgomery County school districts in the county and with the Educational Service Center downtown to look at a variety of different platforms and companies that do provide a stable Ohio curriculum based on the learning standards and, um, will give us an opportunity to allow families to make that choice if they choose not to have their students set foot physically into our school buildings. Currently, we have 1,511, uh, students, uh, whose families have made that choice. That breaks down about 25% of the students in grades, uh, in grades K through 5, about 796. Um, in grade 6 through 12, there's 715. And that breaks down by middle school, about 348, in our middle schools, grade 6 through 8, about 21%. And then we have 367 at Central High School, which is about 15%. Um, right now, tonight, I'm proud to tell you that our goal is to make sure that the delivery of that curriculum is done by several schoolteachers. Um, and so we're working on that this week. We have to, we have a lot to do this week, a lot of, uh, i's to dot and t's to cross. We have a lot of planning to do to pull that off and make that effective, but that's our goal right now, that we feel it's important that, that these are our families, these are our students, and we want to stay in touch with these students. We don't want another company, another, um, teacher from that company delivering the instruction. We want to be delivering that instruction. So that's our goal right now, and that's the direction we're heading right now, and I believe we'll be able to pull that off. There are some challenges, and we've, we've got a lot of high-powered kids in our district. We have a very rigorous curriculum, uh, K through 12, especially in our upper grades. If you look at honors and advanced placement, we're committed to working hard to make sure that, uh, if students and the parents make the decision not to come into our school buildings out of fear of the virus, that we provide what we need for them to be successful and take the classes and courses that they need. So again, we are going to work hard, do everything we can to help every student be successful. I would tell you that we've never seen anything like this before. Uh, your comments were right on the mark. Things change every single day. We think we have a great plan, we're heading in one direction, and then something kind of, a curve falls thrown at us, something changes. And so we get back together, we meet again, and we come up with another plan. So right now, again, our goal is not to, um, harm kids in any way. Our goal is to get kids back, to get them back to stay in session, and to get back to what I hope is normalcy and back to, um, a sense where they, they get to experience that school and all those traditions and see their friends and all those kinds of things. So that's really where we're heading right now, but we felt like the blended model was a good way for us to start, and it was a good way, um, that hopefully we start the year and we can stay in session. So I appreciate the time to allow me to, uh, share a couple of thoughts and ideas. Again, for the audience out there, uh, here today, and also Sarah puts it out on the, uh, TV or takes the tape and puts it out, I would encourage everybody to continue to check the frequently asked questions, our website. We continue to update that, um, and we'll, we'll continue to push out more and more information. So, and again, my staff, myself, you know, we are open, um, to receive emails, calls. Um, we will get back to you just as soon as we can. We have gotten back to a lot of people that have spoken tonight, recognize the names, and and so we'll continue to, to stay in touch with you if you have questions. So I appreciate the time tonight and share, I don't know.
Good evening.
Uh, Dr. Henderson, was that one? Dr. Henderson, um, the, the option one is a fluid option. Um, as, as you stated in your presentation, Tuesday, we're on again tonight. Do we know where we are as far as what kind of trends we're looking for? How, how and when are we going to make those decisions to change to, uh, hopefully 100% in person, or, um, if, if we have to go fully remote on option one students? And how, how often are we looking to do that? Obviously, it can be a weekly thing, um, and has there been any discussion as to what kind of a, a notice we'll be able to give parents and the community on that?
First of all, if we make a change, we will give the parents as much notice as we can. So, you know, it would be great to, you know, today is Monday, it'd be great to say that next Monday, we're going to be going back 100%. We could make that change that quickly. If we had to, we would make sure that we gave our parents that good notice that we were making a change. Uh, regarding the things that we'll be looking at, uh, we talked about this as a, as Montgomery County Public School Superintendent, about the different alert colors that have been announced by the governor, the yellow, the orange, the red, and the purple. There are some districts across Ohio that have aligned themselves to that. Um, we, we like the flexibility of, of having latitude and discretion, uh, by looking at things like zip codes in our area versus the whole county approach. Um, you know, some, we don't call snow days by county, you know, we just call snow days by districts and by myself and others getting out and driving the roads. And so we like that opportunity to see how we are doing here in several city schools, you know, what our, what our statistics look like, how, how safe we are, you know, how many cases we have and those kinds of things. So, uh, I think that the color though, the alert colors would definitely be something that we're looking at. We are and continue to be in conversations with Jeff Cooper, the public health commissioner. Um, we've been told that, um, he will be providing a lot of directions, uh, going both ways on how things are going. And so that will have some impact on some of the decisions that we're making. And, and I think part of this is going to really, you know, we know how contagious the virus is, we know how quickly it can spread, um, and I think staying open, uh, by using masks and social distancing will be important. And, um, uh, right now, I'm not giving you a very clear cut absolute, like, we're going to stay, if we can stay open for 10 days without COVID case, we're going to go 100%. But, um, I think that would be a good start, if we could do that, and, um, and then we'll see how it goes at that point.
Okay. So my other question was, um, you mentioned that, that you're working to seek, and the goal is to have an online delivery, or online curriculum for option two delivered by the central staff. Does that mean we are no longer using school's PLP, or that would be a conjunction with school's PLP? Could you expand on that?
Okay, good question. We are going to use school's PLP for the curriculum. So it is a, a state of Ohio, um, is all the learning standards covers that, but our staff will actually be using that platform, that information to do the teaching, delivering instruction.
So will those students be assigned or remain, if they're already at the middle school or high school level, will they remain with their existing advisor? And that will be the, the touch point there? If they're in elementary, will they be assigned to a regular teacher? Or will we be combining perhaps, um, different elementaries to one teacher? Do you know how that's going to work yet?
I, I can tell you what I think it's going to look like right now, but until we, we finish all of our planning, it may look a little bit different. But currently, right now, you know, we can break these numbers down, like, let's use the, uh, 2 through 5 buildings right now. Yeah, I don't have this in front of me tonight, and I have it back in my office, but I can tell you that we have, you know, 23 second graders in this building. We have 26 third graders in this building that have made this choice. And so, uh, we'll be looking at, um, making sure that all the numbers work, and we'll be looking to, uh, seek out staff that could take all 23 of those second graders, for example, and be the teacher for those 23 students, as an example. It gets a little bit more complicated at the middle school and the high school, uh, because they are a little bit more content, um, specific in nature. And so, um, you know, I think for, um, a seventh grader who attended a middle school and had Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so as an advisor, uh, once we open fully, they will go back to have Mr. and Mrs. So-and-so, uh, as an advisor fully. But, uh, depending on the teachers that are available, the teachers that we will, um, work with to deliver this model, it might not be the same teacher that is in their family. Uh, you know, the, the, two of our middle schools have failing groups of teachers, and the blonde's has hots. And so, um, and the high school, um, it'll be the same way. We're going to try as much as possible to keep them, they'll stay with their same advisor once we open back up. But again, if they're in, um, you know, we have some, some work to do to, to make sure that they're taking all the courses and getting the courses that they need to be taking, whether that be, you know, biology, or AP Chem, or whatever that might be, to, to set them up for success that way. So, um, they, they may not have all of the same teachers that they had before, but once we get back, they will. But we, we hope to be delivering that to our teachers.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Sure. All right. Next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, tonight, I want to review with you our fiscal year 2020 year-end general fund financials. I'm going to talk a little bit too, just as a reminder, I'm going to just review the state funding cuts that we received back in the last couple of months, also the Paris funding and how those two kind of go together and, and where that puts us in terms of finances. I want to mention our, uh, food service fund, um, in light of the school closure. And then finally, I'm going to talk a little bit about the schedule for building the 2021 financial plan. So, and I did email this out to all of you, so the numbers are a little small, I apologize, but you do have it in your email. So let's talk first about revenue. So remember, we did a review in May, you submitted a prior forecast to ADEMA. Um, and so I'm comparing our actual numbers to those May estimates for fiscal year 20. So when we, uh, looked at those numbers, we actually had our tax revenue and our rollout all collected. So the numbers that, um, were in the May plan are our actual numbers. We ended up about $1.4 million over, uh, in more revenue than what we had anticipated. And part of that is due to the state funding. So back when we approved the May higher forecast, it had been announced that we were going to have a $2.1 million reduction in our state funding. There was legislation that came about in the very end of May and early in June that said certain districts were not going to lose as much as what we thought. So we actually collected a little more state revenue than what we had anticipated. So that's, uh, the state money that you can see there. And then the other category that we collected a little bit more in was just, uh, in June, we received some tuition reimbursements for some poor placed students and things that we just weren't anticipating. It's, it's hard to know for one year to the next how much that revenue is going to be until it actually comes. So for revenue, we ended up about $1.4 million ahead of our estimate. So on the expense side of things, um, I take a look at salaries and benefits together, since really they, they, they go hand in hand. They're also about 90% of our budget, so that's one of our biggest areas. So that, that difference was about, uh, $1.13 million under budget. So that's good that we ended up under budget. Uh, it's about 1.15%. I think that's a pretty good margin. I can tell you from looking back at 2019 and 2018 data, I can attribute about $400,000 of that directly to not needing substitute employees that, that worked nine weeks due to the school closure. And so part of what we ended up under budget was, was due to the closure. All of the other areas that you see out there, the curriculum, instruction, business services, and then the other expenses, uh, and, and we talked about this in May, when we talked about the forecast, our spending really stopped. We weren't buying supplies other than what we needed for cleaning and sanitizing things, uh, most of those types of things, all, we just stopped spending for the most part, wherever we could. Professional development was canceled, we were receiving refunds for registrations to people who were attending, we weren't paying out anything like that at that point. So in terms of our overall expenses compared to what our May estimate was, we were about $2.5 million under budget. So transportation costs too, I just wanted to point that out. We obviously didn't have fuel costs for, for a 25% of our school year. So where is that in terms of deficit spending? We knew, we, we've been talking about it for months, all the way back to, let me time, uh, back in October, we were talking about it, that we were going to deficit spend this year. Um, the May's plan was that we would deficit spend around $10 million, but because our revenues came in a little bit higher than projected, our expenses were under projection, uh, we deficit spent by $6.2 million, which is pretty close to where the original October forecast was. Um, but then I, I wanted to give you just a couple of points there, uh, give you the carryover balances. We started the year with $34 million in the bank, so to speak, that's our cash reserve. Uh, we ended the year with $27 million. Uh, and then to move on to, um, the state foundation reductions and the Cares money. Uh, one of you had asked the question, where, where are we in terms of how much did we get reduced, but yet we received some Cares money? Uh, so the, the bullets on the left are, uh, the amounts that we, uh, received, uh, reduction in fiscal year 20 was a net reduction of $1.3 million from the state. And I say a net reduction because originally it was supposed to be $2.1. Hospital 164 was announced, and we received some of that money back. So we still didn't get $1.3 million that we were anticipating. All we have for fiscal year 21 is, uh, a, a little bit of communication promoting that says, we're going to start your funding where it left off in fiscal year 20. Uh, I, I put as of 7/27, so as of today, that's the information that I have. I, I don't feel confident that that's all that we will be reduced. I hope that that's all we will be reduced, but there is a potential, depending on what happens with the economy in the coming months, that the state could possibly, uh, reduce funding further. So we did receive some Cares funding, the elementary, secondary, uh, school emergency relief funds. Um, we received a net allocation of $482,000, and that's to respond to, uh, things related to COVID. There is another, uh, Cares, um, grant out there called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Our net allocation, uh, that's been announced, we've never received this money yet, but that's been announced is $428,000. And so again, those are to, to buy PPE, it's to buy clinical examination, it's to, it's to basically pay for anything that we want to pay for that is related to the coronavirus.
Is that a lie, you say that we didn't have budget? It put restrictions on the, the budget forward, the, 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 the less of budget that's a way to go? How do we work budgeting for PPE?
Correct, correct, yes, yes, that's correct. So in that reduction for what I'm looking at in terms of a two-year period for now, and, and I, and I took the Cares money off of there, you could argue that that's not, you know, we weren't, like you said, Michelle, we weren't expecting to, to buy PPE, um, but when you had all those numbers out, it's, it's a reduction. to have to buy PPE. But when you add all those numbers out, it's a reduction of $1.8 million. You know, fiscal year 21, I think that there is still risk for additional reductions, whether that's state money, whether that's tax collections. It could be a whole lot of things there. There's no replacement for the cares money. We get the money, we spend it, and then it's gone. And so unless they pass another stipulant package, there won't be any replacement for the cares money. And one thing that I'm unclear of at this point in every district or every school district is unclear of, is what is our state foundation funding going to be for 2022 and beyond then? So we have to do a five-year forecast. And so we think this year, we might be down $1.3 million. But what is it going to be for the last four years of our five-year forecast? So I wanted to also mention to you the food service fund balance, because this is going to potentially impact the general fund in fiscal year 21. The food service fund has been, ever since I could find, all the way back to at least '15 and probably even on, has been self-sustaining. And so many districts have to use general fund money and transfer into the food service fund because it runs in the red. Our food service fund does not run in red, but I will share with you that on June 30th of 2020, the balance was down to $27,000. So that's due to school closure. We had no revenue in the fourth quarter. I spoke to Mr. Westney. He's well aware, we're working on a plan to take a look at that. But just, I wanted you basically to just be aware as we get into 21, that this is an area that we may have to take a look in June after it's running over to get it out of the red and with the balance in the red. So I'll keep an eye on that as the year goes, and I'll keep you informed of where that's at as the year goes. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is a little bit about the schedule for 21. In normal years, I like to try to have the budget for the new school year completely finished by now. That's had a little bit of a challenge, just with the restart plan and the staffing needs and levels, you know, waiting here, we're going to have no reductions. But we're getting there. We're getting close. We've actually been working on it since, I guess, March, probably. So tonight, I reported out to you the 2020 year-end figures, which I would normally do any July. The financial master plan, we've made accounting changes. I have this new planning tool that we're using. We'll have that pretty much complete in terms of any accounting changes or organization changes in the next couple of weeks. So from now through the middle of August, over the next three to four weeks, I'll be working with central office administrators to finish our plan for 21, knowing that it's going to probably be pretty fluid, you know, as the year goes on. But then in August, either in our work session or probably at our work session, we'll present that plan to you so that you can see where we think we're going to be for the year. And then beginning in September of 2020, I have new financial reporting tools that I want to bring to you for board approval, everyone, to replace some of the reports that you've seen in the past ones that I think will give you a glimpse of graphs and things like that, and just I can give you a better picture of where we're at.
As Ms. Auburn gets back to her desk, I've been motioned to consider the treasurer's recommendations, which includes the monthly financial report, fund activity report appropriations, general funding spending report, general fund summary, general fund summary, which requires EOs included in statement number seven, approved by administrations in and out, certified by the treasurer, supported by board resolution totaling $219,521.69.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, we need a motion to consider approving a resolution providing for the issuance of sale of bonds, a maximum amount of $39 million, later $90,000 for purpose of refunding for debt charges, savings, savings, certain, the school district's outstanding school improvement refunding bond, Series 2012, dated October 3, 2012.
Second.
Do you want to explain that for us, Ms. Dernbach?
Sure. We went over this in detail at our work session two weeks ago. And this is basically refinancing for a lower interest rate, which doesn't impact our general fund. It's just dealing with outstanding debt of the district.
So it's an effort to reduce our costs, which will save the district money?
Yes.
And what's the estimate if we get it to the best rates we can get right now?
About, well, I'm not sure what a market said today.
I know, but...
But around 9% of our interest cost.
Thank you.
And that's truly a savings for the test year.
That is correct, yes. Actually, it is. It's a savings for the test year.
Right. All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is we need a motion to consider approving the minutes of the following board of education meetings, June 22, 2020 record meeting, July 13, 2020 special meeting.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. So we take the next A, B, C, D, one, yeah, the right edge, and G.
Do you want separate?
D two separate.
This is one.
D two is one, we have to separate.
Yeah, that's how it is.
If you want to vote them all together, you want to do A separately, voting on it.
D separately, please.
All right. Do all of them except those two and do G. The motion on the following recommendations, superintendent recommends accepting reservation listed on Schedule A. Superintendent recommends employment chamber appointment status or change of contract status for the fifth person listed on Schedule B. Salary programs on the effective date given. Superintendent recommends employment change appointment status for support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salary program given. And the superintendent recommends the reemployment of non-renewed personnel listed on Schedule G for reasons on the date given.
Second.
What's your comments? All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Schedules D and D one, the superintendent recommends employment personnel listed on Schedules D and D one for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
President.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
President.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. The motion on D two, superintendent recommends employment personnel listed on Schedule D two for the supplemental contract for extra duty assignments.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
I'm staying.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Consider, we need a motion to consider approving the bus routes for the 2020, 2021 school year, authorization for the supervisors' expectation to adjust routes when necessary.
Second.
Dr. Rohr, Dr. Anderson, you want to explain how we're doing with bus routes, so that the community can understand?
Absolutely, Mr. Dahl. This is kind of an annual resolution we asked the board to approve. We like to give permission to our supervisors of transportation to have that opportunity to change routes throughout the school year as needed. And again, this is the typical time when we do that, to give that permission. So throughout the school year, they will make adjustments as needed based on new students coming and students leaving. And we also like to acknowledge that many, many years ago, we used to post all of the pickup and areas and buses where the bus stops were publicly. We don't do that at Oliver for student safety reasons. And we will communicate with the bus stops through the home access center that parents can access for their children. So we'll be, as we get closer to the start of school, we'll be updating the routing information, bus stops, the times, and everything like that in our home access center.
That's the important thing. We really want to make sure that children are safe in school. I want that information, obviously, parents can find it, by their contact. We don't want to post it with anyone else. All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, we need a motion to consider a resolution approving the Central City Schools diversity plan previously presented by the Diversity Equity Inclusion Team and was discussed at a couple prior meetings.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on the agenda, consider a resolution approving the revision board policy under 413 line, reductions in classified staff previously also discussed at a prior meeting.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. And finally, we need a motion to consider a resolution approving the COVID-19 face covering policy also previously discussed.
Second.
All roll, please.
You'll post this so everyone will be up to their privacy, right? Definitely. We'll get that out on our website, definitely.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is we need a motion to approve.
Second.
All roll, please.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuder?
Yes.
Megan Spark?
Yes.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes. Thank you very much for coming, paying attention, and all your fine comments. We appreciate all of it. Thank you very much. Your journey.